Mr. Counselor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Alan Nardi. I'm the chairman of the Starred Commission. Welcome to our meeting. If you have not signed in, our signing sheet, please do. And we'll start with a roll call of the commissioners for our plans. Vanna Nesper.
Here.
Vincent Walsh, here. Marissa Zorizzi.
Here.
Judith Crowe.
Yes.
Walter Crowe, here. Well, you do have two things on the agenda tonight. We'll try to be as courteous as possible. You need to start, however, with just a review of the accepted set of minutes for two previous meetings. I make a motion that would affect the minutes in the very beginning of the time period.
Seven.
Do we have any perspective regarding two to five? Take a vote. I don't know if you can lift. Walter Crowe, yes. Judith Crowe?
Yes.
Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
Vincent Walsh, yes. Vanna Nesper.
Yes.
Okay, pass this. Thank you. Can you push on to the next? Set of minutes for June 16th. Do we have time to take a little bit time? Yes. That will also make a motion about the acceptance of the 11816.
Second.
So what's one thing you don't want to do? Second, those. Do you have any discussion regarding the minute? Does he have a rhythm? Okay, I'll take a vote. Vincent Walsh, yes. Vanna Nesper?
Yes.
I don't know if you've seen this. Walter Crowe, yes. Judith Crowe?
Yes.
And Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks to our staff. Next, we have CPC Disturbment Restoration Brands. First, it is 145 Harvard Street.
They gave an email saying someone would be here, so.
I didn't know I would be up first.
My name is Homer Drexler.
I care. Homer Drexler, 145 Harvard Street.
This suit for certificate is not a possibility. All these are probably a description, no changing, resigned material. But any exterior siding and paint that was learned to repair or replace them. Light materials will be used to replace any broken, deteriorated, or missing siding trim. Decorative elements, lattice, sparring, trim boards, and that. Paint may do with a match. Repair or replace porch decking, ceiling, and threshold. With light material and restore doors will go out of the collision or change appearance. Repair in point effective brick on the chimney in foundation by removing old morgue and re-shred bricks in new morgue to match. Rave all joints to half inch deep. Brush clean and do the same for the foundation. Windows on the second portion be changed up to original one over one configuration. See the attached preservation consultant report. Okay, so how does it look to you? Tell us a little more about the project. Vincent, please.
If you kind of have a record? Yes, I met with, uh, with the various designers. And they walked property looking at. The, the old work that was existing, some of it was modified, really supported to the state. I can't remember the name of the store. It's, uh, take your time. Let paint, de-letting. I don't remember the name of the neurotic boss, but anyways, uh, the posts that are existing, well, that were existing, that you see there, you zoom in. Those posts were gone. So. The handrails were rebuilt. The lattice apron and all of that has all rebuilt. That's fine, but all of the posters, one, two, three, four, five. I think there was 12 posts that were replaced with those modern colonial posts. And I did advise the, uh, the de-letting company. I don't remember their name as well, but, uh, the state commissioner, she said that she would advise you guys that she's overriding whatever you say and put the former post in there. So they did. So I don't know.
Have you ever heard any of them?
I can't remember. I'd like to have you come up with that. Yeah, I'm, I'm. Based on the best of my knowledge, 13 and a half years and eight and a half of his chair, somebody from the state can't override us. That's what I was.
Attorney Shuchuck, can you respond to that?
Supposed to be so. I'm sorry, override, what's, what's, what's going to be overridden?
The applicant said that somebody from the state said they were going to override no matter what we decided anyways on some of these posts. And I've never heard of such a thing being able to be done.
Yeah, that's, that's news to me. I mean, the, the, the state has, has a, um, we, we follow, we basically follow the, the state. The state law for, for, for the historical ordinance and, um, so our, our ordinance is basically the same as a state, state ordinance is for historic. So I'm not sure what, what they would override.
Right, well, I'm sure it was maybe worded differently. Talking, when they, when this woman was talking to the applicant here. Uh, it's not a new current scope though, by those previous, these previous strike crack. Well, that's what's making me wonder because I'm reading this and I still, I don't see posts in any of this or. They did it all different, but they, they now don't post it as part of this. He, uh, I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be done.
So can, can you tell us what exists there right now? Is that what we're looking?
Thank you. No.
Okay, what exists there right now and who did that?
Uh, a vibe. Yeah, they're de-letting. De-letters. Yeah, no chance. All right, they can't pull their, uh, isn't it, um, uh, the sipping name, but a vibe, they're, I think they're out of due swamp now. And, um, they were the de-letting contractors that were authorized by the state to replace those posts. So that's, that seems more accurate. That's it there. So for the previous, so those are the new ones. Previous posts were ornate, had, you know, some architectural detail. I did advise that, you know, it should be restored or preserved, um, and.
And the state won't hold that with this.
Yeah.
When, when was this meeting? This last year?
No, no, right about. I like to say maybe seven or eight years ago now.
Oh, okay. So we're not talking about something that happened. We have a state previous.
No, it didn't happen within the past year or so. We're going to just check and see if we have a file.
So this was definitely a year ago, the state posted.
Yeah.
I thought.
No, no, I haven't either way. That doesn't happen anyways.
Did you, did you see something in writing that, that the state sent that overridden this?
Oh, no, he just said it, but it, as it turns out, it's something they did years ago. And we're going to, he's going to go check to see if we have an old file. It might've been something that came in front of us and we looked at the posts and said, okay. Which is what would have had to happen no matter what the state said. Uh, but it doesn't mean we wouldn't have approved them. Now, seven years ago, I can't tell you what I did, so. Yeah, days ago. So.
What, do you know what you did seven minutes ago, Walsh?
Nah, I think I was, I'm sure you have witnesses. I think I made a motion to accept.
Maybe I did.
Just give us a minute.
No, but what, so what's the thing is you wanted to restore it the way it was historically, like eight, seven or eight years ago.
Yeah.
And the state came in and said.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
Do what they want because it's, yeah.
And we were, as a violation of the hierarchical commission.
Correct.
Okay.
As I said, they were supposed to be.
That's the old file?
Yeah. They said we were supposed to, um, go before the Starred Board and get approval.
Yeah.
Before you take them out. And she says, no, it doesn't matter. And proof, proof? Yeah, we might have it here. Glad I've checked. If that's still wrong, obviously, this didn't have to be done. Yeah, strength of the store commission is voting to approve stucco appropriateness and replace all windows of Marvin one over one paint pattern for any existing paint patterns. Okay. Got that signed by Bob McCarroll in 2016. It was sitting here, but it wasn't. Actually, change windows from wood to material. Well, this is another little place window for us, well, wanting to search. With sashes. All right, well, nothing on the post yet. Let me see, there's. Well, I don't want to.
I think my next piece.
Yeah, that's not what's in front of us.
Lights.
Yeah.
I think we need to deal with the application as it exists today.
Well, we would actually apologize, but we are because, because the position was that somebody else told them they could do something without our permission, and I don't want that to stand for. So it might, it might, the chair can stop me anytime, but I think that's an important point, although where, when do we deal with that now or later, but. You know, sir, you go. Okay, well, no, I think it's important for the record. Yes, because if there was some decision made in the past, we, we need to work on top of that. So I think that information is important. I do agree with Vanna that we need to take a look at that and make a decision on this application. If we can decide on the application without the information of the previous post that's on hold, then we, we could be able to do that, or we would have to postpone all that information, but I think not. They're in a very tense, like, not related, like, see. Well, we go on, whatever. So, you know, this is, are we calling for the public hearing?
This is not a flexibility. Another reason why it's on our agenda is because they're receiving funding in the city.
And this initial statement made it sound like an indemnical to me. I understand. Yeah, no, it, it was definitely, uh, there, now you're, yeah. All right, I do have one question on this request, and that is, we talked about the they're repointing and you're going to match, assuming it could be a match color with a morgue. Yeah, that has to be matched. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that. Well, some people say match is just a morgue. Certainly, but, uh, yeah, so that was my only question that I had. Did anyone else have any questions? I actually, we actually did have a question on this part. Please go ahead. It's just, the only thing it mentions about windows on the second portion be changed out to the original one over one configuration. Seems like what I read in the previous file that already would be redone in one over one configuration. So are they already one over one on the second? Yeah. You're all one over one. It's a little. Except, uh. Okay, so I think I understand that the window you want to replace is a match, these others that have been previously replaced.
What window are you replacing?
Never replacing it.
No, no windows.
Maintain, maintain existing configuration. I think what happened when they walked, when they walked through, they were, you know, just assessing and reassessing, you know, from ground level. And, uh, to make sure whatever is existing, when it comes for the morgue that remains and or is, uh, put back the way that it is at that time. Yeah, that's, that's just a, they should get changed out to a regular morgue.
But you're not, so just for clarification, you're not replacing any windows?
No.
Okay.
But that was in the report, evident. The consultant's report.
Okay.
That's, that's right.
Okay, commissioner, those are the questions. Are they good clarification? Is that we open to a need for their comments or here to make a motion, so in the the fourth? One floor, it's not Harvard Street.
I make a motion with the proposed exterior renovation that was presented. In this case.
Noting that there are, well, there will not be any other questions. I'm assuming you're accepting that as part of the motions?
Yes.
With any further discussion? Well, just the, the chairman of those. Wow. Okay, so I'll take a vote. Commissioner Walter Crowe, yes. Judith Crowe?
Yes.
Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
Vanna Nesper?
Yes.
Vincent Walsh?
Yes.
Alan Nardi?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
But you tell everybody else if anything changes based on the support, materials.
Yeah.
Come back and we'll develop, but you're going to do different.
Yeah, that is right. Yeah. Thanks. Only get a part of this, you can free this. Right, that's specific to the figure. Yeah. That's sort of, thank you.
Thanks.
You want to be a part of it? Thank you. We'll be back.
Hey, Andrew, can you send me info on that with the, with the override, the post and all that, um, for this? Okay, thank you.
Where are the new documents? Now, where it's in the mail. Uh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go on to the card four of the meeting. Agenda, public hearings continue. Twenty-three screws on the town. There's someone here for the help there. Request for continuance and continue the out of agent, because it was celebrated, it's twenty-three screws from having them to of late.
July 17th.
July 17th. This one wants to timeout. Do I have a section on it?
Okay, I have an exemption or something.
So this is, this is both timeout. We're great on the time.
Perfect.
Did I? Any second. Oh, good. Dr. Dr. Crowe, thank you, man. Before we ever, before we end up on a mission or doctor. We even got to any further discussion on this continuance? I'll start with Vanna Nesper.
Yes.
Alan Nardi, yes. Walter Crowe?
Yes.
Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
Judith Crowe?
Yes.
And Vincent Walsh, yes. Moving along on number 293 Clarendon Street. Is anyone here for that, don't they?
I have.
Thank you. Please come on up and have a seat. Give us the name of residential address for your question.
It's Jeff Scavran. I am at 245 St. James Avenue.
Like a lot of the, 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 so this was an application for certificate of hardship?
Yes, so you recall from last meeting, the commission had requested that the applicant submit a building permit application with the building permit, which they have. And it is signed in the paper.
And for the record, I will just read again, even though this is a completely illusion. The condition of the porch fence, as the instance of a home enjoys from the daycare of 93 Clarendon, is for the children, families, social workers, inspectors enter the porch doorsteps and wooden rails, but the ride is as well as some support strap that was underneath. An accomplished refurbisher and the family inspected the situation and estimated the cost of repair would be $12,948 with wooden materials and $7,512 with artificial materials. The porch itself is one at vinyl windows that says the street, along with vinyl safe storm at the entrance. Final pet storm has entered. The siding of the house is concrete, asbestos. Artificial materials for the railings and knives were purchased and going to style to match the ride maturity. After considerable support work was done, the court restored its stability and safety. Durable tracks form is used to repair the wood. Please note, the owner was not aware that the house renovation fell under the jurisdiction of the disturb commission and that renovation of physical structures, meaning the inquiry with the commission. The addition was not known until notification that we placed on the final and tracks was restored by the commission. The owner now understands the obligation. The application for the certificate of hardship is all due to the fortune railing, substructure unsafe as entry especially to daycare children unable to afford the instructions, so forth. Both repaired structurally with foot and then vinyl and fresh. Do we have any further information on all this? Please do, before I got here, but I have any results. Well, we have no other decisions on it, because we're not. No, they, no. It's, it's, we heard it, they, they, the hardship. Okay, so I think the hardship, that's what Ted, that's what somebody, a neighbor saying. I want to update. So.
And if you recall from last meeting, appearing shoot, I had recommended really narrowing down what the hardship was. So there's, there's two ideas like that, and we've not hearing over the example.
Whatever you say, go ahead. Yeah, you just.
Well, the four. This commission had identified four reasons for why hardship exists. So those were, outlining those for the hardship.
Would I have any other comments or questions from another commission? Okay, so I'll be hoping to get some two little notions of some of the they should be right there, like the public committee. I know we did that last time. We, 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 you want us to?
Yes, for that one. I think it hurts.
Okay, we can, we can, we can, we can do that. So we're going to open it up to the audience for public comment on 93 Clarence Street, if anyone wishes to make comments either for or not move through or the hardship. Okay, so now I want to look at the new votes. We'll go back to the commissions. Commissioner, they are interested in offering, say, motion and clarifications for your motion. I think it's motion, it's not, it's still a quote, the certificate of hardship.
Yep. And in the motion, I have outlined what the hardship is.
Hardship, I think, is outlined on the plate.
Yes. Everyone here is. Yeah, it's people.
So it's present. Yeah, they're right on.
Yeah. There was four of that. Hold on, breathe. That was, we identified at the last meeting.
Are we looking for a motion?
Yes. Yes.
I know that the applicant, the application being accepted because ultimately, um, under hardship, because of the entrance to a licensed daycare that was structurally and sound and live. Uh, and there was immediate need to address the situation. Uh, because of the low income of the family, this was done with, with what it should I include that?
Yeah.
Coming being aware.
If I hear a desig, I'm which is considered a hardship.
Right.
So I still need a second for that. Second. I'm going to, one comment, maybe it would be my hope that anything that, any time was tracks formed was to change that and sort of come back to the commission for the part of why it certainly. For any changes. Yeah, any change. Any changes. But especially over here. Especially the floor will take a beating more than any of this.
Well, in some ways, it requires a whole lot of stuff, like the lattice isn't a hardship like that.
No.
That's not a hardship. Stuff like that can be.
Speed is the word. Yeah. Okay, any other further comment before I ask for a vote? This is terrible, Judith Crowe?
Yes.
Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
Walter Crowe?
Yes.
Vanna Nesper?
Yes.
Vincent Walsh, yes. Alan Nardi, yes. Everybody, you, you, very much.
You're reading, Alan, I'm there.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to tell her everything you said tonight, too.
I'm sorry, what was?
We're going to tell her everything you said tonight, too.
Okay, we're going to go on to, uh, third completed public hearings. Uh, let's say Buckingham Street, ensuring you know the article.
That one, the applicant has requested a 45 day extension and he continues to be.
July 17th.
What did Walsh have a continuing? And it was already set for that date, wasn't it?
Uh, this one now is, uh, we want to come.
So we need motions of continuing, continuing.
Yep.
That, oh, they make sure I want to just continue, continue, most of those type of, I mean, that's, uh.
Continuing.
And the second was, uh, Marissa?
Sure.
Day.
Any discussion? Alan Nardi, this is yes. Walter Crowe?
Yes.
Vincent Walsh, yes.
Yes.
Judith Crowe?
Yes.
Marissa Zorizzi?
Yes.
And continue for the continuing, yes. We're going to continue on. It's, I don't know. First, I bear the function, you know, it's popular, new agenda, and we'll debate it. No, but, I think it's.
It's one as a goal.
Then, oh, this one, this one. If anyone is in, who just lost. Okay, so we're going on to new public hearings, the first south side of Parker Street. Until we hear anything, you, there's one on Parker. I'm going to go over.
Other, be here 25 Parker Street, Ian Walsher.
So it's, it's, it's.
I didn't do it.
No.
Okay, go.
You could, excuse me, I can, this is always, uh, this is why I don't think they're trying to come in.
Yeah.
Special meeting in the, they have it now.
Intersect, that's the other. We're waiting for staff to, um, back to the left. So this is a, uh, application for certificate of appropriateness. We'll read the description. Change of most of the regular windows located on. We read the description, change of most of the regular windows located on the parish house under the main church. The knives located on the side facing the schoolhood. Or the room first and second floor. Through the building, we have several windows, proposed in this project to be replacing with vinyl. Due to easier operation by volunteers and repairs. At the time present, the present time, we are unable to open ninety-sixty-one. It become a hazard, especially on. Parish volunteers should open. Frame, color and design will stay the same. So these openings is clearly already built.
They were, they're not. They just got information about yesterday. Origin of the ones that are with them.
So would you like to tell us anymore?
Yeah, that's basically it's the parish hall downstairs and one side, which as is said is facing the school. I have volunteers, um. Have to say, some of them, they're over eighty years old. And when those ladies or men, they're trying to open the windows, it's not working. And one day it was working in a different way that we ended in an emergency room. And we had a proposal here, I was here a few months ago and the proposal before was just to change the. All of the windows but inside and we didn't pay attention. The contractor said will be white and outside bronze and we said we know, we don't want, we want all bronze. That means this new proposal is exactly the windows, I didn't, we didn't pay attention. And and later, when when Brian from Glass General said to me, father, but this problem here, and I said, okay, what is the problem? And he told me that the proposal from different company was to white inside and bronze outside. This was cheaper, probably under eight, ten, but this one is all bronze, but. The thing is, we're changing from aluminum to vinyl. Some are already vinyl, I would probably say seven of them are already vinyl, they were changed. Before the parish ended on the list of the historical buildings, some of the volunteers changed those windows. And that's happened sometimes and we have a northeast now from the. From the contractor who is proposing that the DH nine hundred series double hand, that means will be no change to the design. No change to the color. We worked through the building yesterday, we're going to try to remove most of them from inside. That means if there's any damage to the frame will be inside, it's not visible. We probably have to change two windows from outside on the kitchen. Because we have a vent over there, which is attached to the window halfway and that would be the usual way to do it. But that's only change we're looking is the change of the material from aluminum to vinyl.
So on the window where they will change from the outside, they will replace or keep the trim.
That's incorrect, they're not going, they will. If they would be able to remove the trim first. Carefully and install the same one, that's what the plan is. If not, they're going to paint it same color and put the same material for the tree, yeah.
This DH nine hundred series to go for open as well as.
Custom designed because some of the windows have to be custom designed, they're a little bit bigger.
Questions, clarifications, who am I know?
I mean, it looks to be like a slim line of the slim.
People were laughing why I'm not proposing European windows, I'm warning, and I said, not in United States. Because European windows open inside like both sides, you know.
Okay, so we have no other clarifications, I'll just open up for others. Those there's anyone. Interested in discussing this property, making their comments whether they're ready to pull or not for this request. For certificate for appropriateness.
Sounds like a good proposition.
For your name and residential address. Anyone else either for or not?
You have four.
Yes, that sounds like.
Okay, so we're quote public hearing, we're getting back to the commission. Further discussion on moving to a motion from the commissions.
Would you show me accept the application as presented?
Further discussion, request, comments? And here they provoke Vincent Walsh, yes, and then this bullet.
Yes.
Walter Crowe, yes. Judy Crowe.
Yes.
Yes, and there's a.
Yes.
You got, uh, thanks for coming back.
Thanks.
Something changed.
Very soon I would be here with this school. I just take building at a time. Thank you, thank you.
Next, we have a new public hearing, this is new state one oh five, Hamilton Street. T solar powered. Who's moved down, we had a seat, you give it to the name of residential address, the record.
So I'm here on the top of the floor, you should have. My name is. My home address, okay, my name is Robert Wagner, I live on one hundred Pickup Avenue in South. And I'm here on behalf of the homeowner and training solar. Leave, uh, Aaron sent. The homeowner authorization form that I'm here for is no longer described. So, um. I brought, uh, extra.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, uh, so, um, this is our proposed, um, solar array for the home.
Uh, they're used for the.
Yes, yes, so, um. Yeah, it's because, yeah, the front of the house is right there, so. There's a couple of things I think to note. Uh, the first is that, uh, I'm not actually certain what, uh, Aaron. Who brought the application sent, so I brought just in case. Um, a packet of photos of the inside of the house, uh, to illustrate what I'm talking about in case someone needs it. And then, so the meters currently are on the inside of the city lease. So the first thing that we're doing is we're relocating the meters to the outside. For now, the meter, you'll see the M in the document on the, um. The left side of the house, it is on the opposite side of the solar arrays. And I think it's important to note that, um, as a company, no matter where the home is located, such as. For us, uh, aesthetically, our big selling point is that we try to keep piping not visible. So we will pipe through basements and attics to keep piping on. That's especially true in this case. So even if the meter is on the other side and the ever source finalizes it that way, we will still, um. Pipe either through the basement or through an attic to make sure that the piping does not go over the roof, uh. I've seen some pretty, uh, janky solar arrays where there's a pipe going over the empty roof over to the, that's the. We don't do that for, unless we absolutely. Yeah. Unless we absolutely have to, but, uh, I can leave this with you guys, there are some finished ceilings in the top floor of the house, but there's. Uh, there are new wall attics, so we will have attic access and we fully anticipate. Having no problem being able to pipe most of the pipe work to the inside, inside house. If we ever have to go outside, we will shoot from the back of the house so that the piping stops.
That's right, I might submit this point if we do this the way it is. If you can't put it through the attic, you'll have to come and show us where it goes.
Sure, I see that much, yeah.
Yeah, but you're you're saying all the right things, you're using all the right. We might call a condo. And, uh.
Yeah.
Our our goal with this is to make it minimally visible. We have a street, and so it sounds like you're, you're off to a good start, so.
That is our goal, aesthetics are a big selling point for us and, um. We want to make sure the array is the symmetrical as possible, we want to make sure that conduit is not visible. Um, we we want the array to look attractive no matter what house it's being put on.
You can streak it one, you understand?
Yeah, do you have this?
I just want to see what the left side of that looks like, because that even looks like if you're able, you put the meter out.
You'll hardly see it. In the other house.
Yes, but you got our bad side.
Yeah.
We'll be on the left hand side. Be the wife.
One of, one of. Here's, uh.
Here's five zero seven.
That's a picture of the house.
Yeah.
Yep. It's such.
All right, so just scroll, scroll over.
Thank you.
Yes, you'll hardly see it.
That's a hazard out as well, so that's.
Yeah, so in addition to that, our equipment would be mounted next to it. So, you know, inverters kind of large, so everything would be right next to the meter, so it would be. You'd have to really walk up to it to try and find it. Um, so yeah, that's it, we're we're upgrading the electrical, uh, system a little. With mean service panel, updating that and then moving the meter outside to the back corner, um. Piping inside as much as we can, um. And that's the.
Just on the side, are you doing a roof foundation on it?
We are not.
If you do have to tell them.
So further questions from the commission? I just had one comment from American Architect, they're very worried about panels being so close to the valleys. Whether the thurmos comes out.
Yes.
There'll be a lot of snow sitting, huh?
Yep, so we do try to maintain a gap of about six to eight inches, um. And then, of course, you know, mind also mind the setbacks from the fire department, uh. We don't, we don't want the corner of the panels to rest on the valley. Uh, just, it's just generally a bad idea.
It's a bad idea for the house.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's open up for, let me call a commenter. Is there anyone near the ways to speak either for or not? It's the both of the stories, and I'm going to eliminate one of the seven doctors in the street. Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Harry Seymour, speaking Washington Road, and I would just like to say that I am in favor of this proposal.
Thank you. You're in office, in favor, yes, sir.
Yes, David, hold again, you have no forwarding. Question. Now, as you mentioned, is snow. Let's say we get a heavy, uh, snowfall, how how would that affect the functioning of the panels?
Yeah, the commissioner just said what I was about to say. Public comment is really just whether you're for or against, but the but the question is, well, understood why it was said. Anything else, anyone? So that we don't have to call. So bring it back to the commission. Any further questions or not? Now I'm open to a motion from the commission. We will put the soul down, but we have to know it with meetings. Any motion to approve the proposed installation of solar project here, five, little setting, block industry. Any, that's the second. Who's that? Have further comments, so please? Okay, let me take the boat downward, yes, Walter Crowe.
Yes.
Vincent Walsh, yes, and then this bullet. Mrs. Zorizic.
Yes.
Judy Crowe.
Yeah.
Okay, look at your project, but it's dangerous, just for a moment.
Yeah, that is, so, uh, depending on the pitch of the roof, which that looks to be at least a thirty pitch if not more. Um, snow will slide off panels pretty quickly, especially as the sun warms up. Um, homeowners might want to get a rake, snow, make it and rake it down if they're concerned about the production. But for the most part, the slickiness of the panels, uh, snow tends to to slide right off. If the roof were flatter, uh, we would have to have an engineer certify that the weight of the snow. Would, um, be able to, because it would sit there longer, the the home, the roof would be able to accommodate that kind of a weight. So, uh, but for a roof like that, we're we're not very concerned about snow sitting on top of it. Because the panels are awesome.
Very good, thank you.
Did anything changes to the project?
Yes, I will make sure everybody knows that that meter location changes.
Appreciate it, nice.
Have a good evening.
Right next on our agenda, three hundred and four, this is from the left project.
Yes, sir.
Please come on up, have a seat, it was remain in residential address.
The name is Daniel Diaz, I live at one forty-six Garland Street in Springfield, Mass.
The business of application for community programs. And I'll read the description. Proposed change, the proposed work involves installing architectural asphalt shingles in the very dormer section of the roof. This work will allow for the proper insulation of a turbine roof bent. And the running of the bathroom exhaust fan, hot and cold dormer. These upgrades will bring the attic ventilation to code, prevent moisture diffuse. Enable the mass study of point and product, proceed with weatherization work. The dormant is located at the rear of the home, making these changes invisible in the street view. Now, I have one question, and that is what weatherization work of that installation?
Installation, correct, we're we're planning on doing attic insulation, air ceiling. Um, and there's some new wall addicts that we're planning to insulate.
Okay, are you the account?
I work for Rides Engineering, we're the, one of the lead vendors for Everthor's energy efficiency program.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's over time of rare house, I was gonna say, we're. You will be able to see a friend that.
So I just want to know that, um, we are planning on installing asphalt. Uh, shingles that are going to be black, so it it will look pretty much the same. The only thing, the only difference is there's going to be a roof bend and the bat ban is going to be vented out that roof above.
Is this, what, is it going to be black or what?
It is going to be black, correct.
Okay, so black roof, black.
Black, yeah.
Uh, she thinks it already asphalt chinked off.
It is not, it is like a rolled out, uh, membrane typically used on like flat roofs.
Other questions? Bring it now, go for the public. Express their thoughts, if there's anything you're in favor or not, given this request. Do you remember Florida's? Yes, sir. Anyone else? So let's close the public thing, bring it back to the commission. Any further questions? Okay, I'll be able to in the motion, we'll be there. Got any question, we accept the application to the Florida street, let's pick it. Your second, please, you're you're calling black on the asphalt shingles and black on the. Any no further questions? The quote Vincent Walsh, yes, and then this bullet.
Yes.
Norse Zorou?
Yes.
To recall, yes, Walter Crowe, yes, Neri, yes. Three, two, one, thank you.
Thank you.
Private, you know, changes.
You know.
Anyone else?
Well, he's heard you.
So uh last one please, what was hearing, one six five Central Street?
Central Street.
Well, that's, you know, the way yours, if I'm looking at math, it's Central Street, the names.
And eight.
Lance, did I right?
A flight garage, two one five, four pleasant, that's in the mass. I'm here representing, um, Central Academy. And uh we are uh closing to build a fence. Uh, the original fence, part of the original fence actually was torn down by the tornado, and the school was. Been exposed for almost ten years right now. Uh, we examined, uh, and saw the pictures, so it all happened in three years, and uh there's. Was fencing on one point, there is no fencing on one point, and the even the fencing styles have changed. So the decision was made basically to uh. Install a fence that the similar to what was there, but it weren't being blown down, there's still some fencing that's still available. And actually, uh. S- the fence that's gonna be installed is in line with the neighbors already have. So I have pictures of the fencing that does exist today, and some of the neighbors' fencing, and what. The pictures of the fences are gonna be installed, actually, I brought a sample, that's about eighty pounds, so I'm not sure that. And uh, you know, it's one of the best qualities we're we're able to find for the for the fence.
Did you install? Oh, that's.
No, I kind of left her in store, I don't have a choice for this.
So this is a basically a map where the fencing is supposed to go, most of it is kind of beyond Maple Street, and some of it is kind of in Central Street.
Is that you? I think there are some fencing in there.
Yes, there are some, yes, uh, so some of it on Central, this is on Central Street, some of it is still in paddles.
Yep.
And uh some of it on Maple Street, so also in paddles. And uh this is the fencing that's gonna go.
All of them, yeah.
This is the fencing that we're uh gonna go in. And yeah, this is uh some of the neighbors' fences actually, which almost looks exactly what we're gonna. And like I said, we have that. Part of the fence actually.
The front, alright, probably was friends.
It's gonna be over sixty twelve.
Seventy two.
Yes. Hundred thousand seven, but thousand seven point sixty dollar.
That's what's there now, right?
That's what we, that's uh that's what is gonna be installed.
That's, yeah, what what what's existing is the is the same thing.
Uh, it's actually, yeah, yes, it's close to it, well, it's.
Higher, it is.
Well, some of it, actually, some of it, I mean, if you if you go around the property, yes, that's the better than the picture, actually, I I imagine some of it actually has sunk by commissions over the years, so. You know, I I walked around the property, and some of the fences, you know, is not in great condition, so. But it's very similar to what goes there for.
The material.
Sorry.
As you walk by, it's pretty close. My, yes.
Are you replacing the original, the fence that's still there?
The original, no, there's no, basically, most of the feather. Almost all the fencing is gonna be replaced, actually, there's no content now, so there's none. So none, none of the old stuff is gonna be torn down, because some of it's in working condition. So everything is gonna be put in, it's basically, it's gonna be just brand new.
It's fair.
So nothing's gonna be removed.
That's got some. Are you, did you guys go catch that? No, I was trying to lift that.
Okay.
Well, I remember.
I just said that's.
It's, it's, there's gonna be all the fencing. It's gonna be all the fencing, there's not gonna be any blending to the existing.
Uh, well, some of the existing does exist, so this is upper Maple Street here, and that is not gonna be tore down, that's gonna still, because that is still still functional, still works. And uh some of the, actually, very small parts on Central Street, that's gonna be still gonna be used. And uh the map actually shows exactly where the fencing is gonna go, most of them are, eighty percent of it is on Maple Street, that will twenty percent of that is on Central Street. And again, statistically, it actually fits with the meaning, and that's the closest thing I was able to find, so.
Is there any plan to do anything with the masonry?
We actually, the plan is actually to do the entire school hopefully, not just the masonry, so it's just gonna be a process, but this is the first thing that's to go in. Because without the fencing, we're afraid that somebody's gonna walk in and burn the whole school or something. So you know, so there's, that's almost like an emergency thing, just to get it done as soon as possible, and then we'll start working on the buildings and the masonry.
So if anything changes with the masonry, you have to combat.
Yes, yes, well, this is actually not gonna be touched.
No, but I'm saying if that does.
Yes, yes, absolutely, so there's no masonry.
Further questions, commissions? Let's all open up to the public, is there someone here who would like to speak in favor or not? For this um request, one six nine twenty. Yes, maybe residential. And residential address.
One himself.
Do there anyone else, yes?
Yeah, in favor? Yeah, I named the annual one.
Thank you, residential.
I'm the president of the school.
So you're happy.
Yeah.
We need your home address, either resident.
Sorry, my my hearing is.
Those wasn't mine. You said your residential address, where you live?
Oh, okay, top two twenty Maple, uh Springfield.
That's perfect, thank you very much. Yes, sir, now you have a forwarding, then you feel. Thank you, anyone else? Yes.
Why not? Our last line voice, so. Wow, very same, would you be here if you were Harry Seymour, not if it's a G of Washington Road, I'm in favor of.
Thank you. Well, no, hold on, in favor or not? Close to public hearing, we'll go back to the commission. Will there be any further requests? There's the script, inscription, verification. If not.
I was gonna say, um, I live like around the corner, so. Uh, what you're doing is gonna really improve our the overall re- rebuilding. Um, we can get that whole area back up to pre-tornado.
I'm assuming they got, we got a lot of media shows, so.
You know, uh, seriously.
We're best friends.
When we first moved here, I wanted my son to go to McDuffie, and I was like, oh, you gotta go to McDuffie. And then we had a turn. And then they moved to Green, but whatever. But um I didn't also know that the New Commonwealth School is really, um, that's cool.
Yeah.
Which we try to hope that. You're doing a great job. Achieved, so achieving. You're doing a great job.
Okay, so then I'll. Now, uh, now the commission, is there someone who would like to offer a motion?
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
Thank you, machines. You want further expression? No, I'll tell you. There's no actual, you're equal in the description, you know, this is motion. Thousand seven million things, six foot, I three rail bar, iron, you know, embarrassed, so this is to the fence. And we have. The English field of bolts was standing everywhere, those caps and the closing, four of the lines, four feet, five of the lines, one day for the tree, and check the ways, with the posts. Add to the, it's in the, um, yes. It's very heavy to be, so I never do. Okay, so let me take the vote, please, Vincent Walsh, yes, and then that's cool.
Yes.
No, no, yes, Melissa Lourie.
Yes.
You're in pro.
Yes.
Walter Crowe.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your work and your choice.
Thank you.
You're a great man for people to point to and say, hey, that's the standard in the neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And we come.
Thank you.
Especially.
We brought you over again.
Okay.
Yeah.
You waiting for buyers?
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the, aren't you? Waiting for the chair to announce what's next on the agenda. Yeah. Back, those assets, or a phone call. Yeah, you have, you have a, another item, sort of, you know, one more item, you. Still, right, other matters before I can do anything, we.
To meet and greet.
Yes, project overview.
That's what you got. I don't know if uh pictures were circulated to you.
Yeah, were.
Oh, yeah, they had the color version, you want to see the colors?
They, they have one address for the record, please.
By Springfield addresses or? Yeah.
Resolute.
They being changed, Brooklyn, West Springfield. Maybe broke.
Give us a real.
Uh, so we are attempting to restore sixty buyer street. Took a crack at this about four years ago, uh, plans didn't work out, uh, came back up. Little more damage than we had before, I took some pictures inside of where you're at. Uh, we're talking a fifties art deco building, very unusual uh in Springfield. Uh, the bones are pretty good, um, you know, masonry building, um, stucco exterior. Uh, fundamentally, um, I would uh envision the curb appeal to stay. Pretty close to the uh nature that we have of the pictures, a white stucco finish, black trim windows. I don't know the condition of the windows, we have a collapsed stair inside, I probably got two and a half months of demo alone. And uh rebuilding a floor and uh the back, the back structure of the roof that was damaged. Brick is in great shape, um. The structure overall is in solid shape. Um, so internally, we're looking at uh three units, to go back to the original code, somebody had. You know, legal five unit here. Um, so uh all the vendors have been through, we have a pretty good plan. But if I was to sit here and say to you, here's my plan, uh, that would be misleading, because I think we're gonna come back and forth as we. Go in different section of it and and get to that exterior. Um, I'm really interested to see one of the pictures, make sure to take. Like I said, the brick's in great shape, the windows are. I'm not sure until I get up there what we're dealing with, but they're gonna be almost identical, black trim. When we get to that point and I submit another view of the windows, any fencing I'll bring, I like that fencing he had here, by the way. Um, I'm not sure as it pertains to the um exterior. There's no way that that little balcony up there is original, so we'll come up with something and bring it. Forward to uh for appropriate this when we get to that point, um. Like I said, though, brick, bricks in great shape, um, we have pointed to do there, structures in good shape. The customer, here we go, that's what I was looking for, windows. So um I don't know the condition of the windows till I really open everything up and get it, take a look.
Right, right.
That's from the interior.
Yeah.
Um. It's got a nice overhang, you know, um, there you go, thank you, you.
He's pretty.
Yeah, he's pretty good.
He's amazing, yeah.
Um. I would say that I do envision there's a carport outside, uh, very nice, uh, lighting that up underneath it. Finishing it, um, maybe getting uh against that backlit lighting. Um, numbers, let's say sixty buyers on the side of the house, kinda spruce it up, get some outside, up lighting on this. Once we get to that point, but I think we've got about fourteen months of uh, and the first three months are gonna be. Grinding, it's gonna be, we're we're trying to get to winter, if everything goes well with the city. We're going to um, and I I do wanna extend. That's security fencing right there, that we're gonna use as construction fencing, but the final, I like that fencing there, although. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a little too stay away for me, but I would see us continuing some level of fencing on that.
Something like.
Something like that, um, secure across the front, uh, I think originally it was wide open, but I I think it would benefit tremendously from that. Um, and that's a carport there underneath, um. But I I just think that i- it's got some great, great potential, um. Um, I think that steelwork, don't mind, th- this is all in great shape, this. This steelwork they did there?
Yeah.
It's in great shape, um, so we're very fortunate with that, back of the window has a magnificent. Ten foot high. Window, wide open. Um. It's suffering from some collapse at the bottom, I'll take very close pictures and before I take. A crack at that, I'll come back, right now, my thought in that master room is to go with a uh. Um, a four foot mean wall across the bottom. Uh, resecure that window and try to preserve as much of it as possible, but it it may eliminate a layer or two. Uh, cause it's too short off the ground, it's like eight inches off the ground, and it just doesn't make any kind of sense, um. But I look forward to coming back and and taking it through every step of the way as we get there, um. Like I said, I think we're looking at about a fourteen month project here. Um, we'll know, we'll we'll know when we get in there, got it, get temp uh temp electric in, and uh. Again, come back through all of that, um. You know, we got some real structural work to get done inside, um, at this stage of the game. Um, but it's a, it's a big endeavor, uh endeavor. Um, I don't think that our our fire damage, the fire damage is not what bothers me, concerns me, it's the water damage. From from the seagull penetration, I mean, I think we had a worse fire damage at ninety three Mill Street when we did that. Uh, we closed with the city and the next day the house caught on fire, um, so that that roof, because of the. You know, classic memory in the.
P D ninety two.
Ninety two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I remember the fire.
You remember it?
That part across the street.
That was the day before we were supposed to close and start that project.
It was actually the morning of.
Morning of.
Oh, my gosh.
Walter's always been correcting.
Uh, uh, just for the record on this, this is my business partner on this project, so anything. Regarding historic commission, I will accuse myself not being a part of this. And I carry in real estate projects, he's my business partner, so it's, I will not be participating in it. I'll be on that side of the table or sitting in the seats for anything sixty buyers.
Yeah, for those of you that don't know us or know me, we've done several of these projects in Springfield. Um, successfully, and we've um completed all of them, so. Uh, we're no stranger to what the rules are, and of course, Walter's always there to remind you, step away from this thing.
So I have to say that. This is one of the most precious architectural.
I agree.
Pieces that we have in the city, so it's great that you're doing this. And your before and after pictures would be quite something to see.
I can't wait, I I, like I said, I've been looking at this house for four years, trying to get my hands on it, and. I agree with you one hundred and ten percent, the good news is, I've been doing a lot, a lot of, uh, I'm working on a historic project. Uh, right now, down in um Miami Beach, forty four Union, two story. From the outside, and it's a lot like this, and uh, so there's a, there's a lot of things that I'm taking from that project down there. And I'm already seeing the the crossover, especially internally, and and what can be done, so. Uh, feel good about it, and uh I thank you for your time, and I will see you several times in the next fourteen months.
Thank you for the free.
Thank you, and of course, we take, uh, we don't know everything, so.
We trust the love of the project.
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Oh my, Al, thank you for your time, everybody, thank you, for those of you I don't know, it's a pleasure to meet you.
It's serious, what I ever do to deserve that guy.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, that was really cool.
Oh, I can't wait to see that, and looks like it's done.
Yeah, it was one of the very first things that I saw when I came back.
Nice.
Some of them, and that was, that was strange, but I think that was very.
Great, yeah.
It was the same time, yeah, I remember, it was my mentor, so I noticed, so I, I saw it straight away. Um, listen.
Okay, straight updates.
Yeah, so um, I was contacted by someone, uh. That got an approval at fifteen Brooklyn Place, it was an environmental review, um, and it was where I couldn't. My lack of experience comes into play, so, um, the. Uh, they had proposed new windows, different internal grids with a dark color, um. But the windows that they're replacing, they're going through the homes, uh, healthy homes, yeah, so. Uh, money is a little bit, you know, uh, they're being harvest of money, so, uh. What they originally proposed, internal grids with darker colors. uh, money is a little bit, you know, uh, they're being harvested money, so, uh, what they originally proposed internal grids with darker colors, they're about, um, was too expensive for their budget, so they wanted to request an apology color with external grids. So is that something that needs to come fat due to the color change, or, um, that, since it's an environmental review, I didn't know color is, well, but you guys are not.
Well, so legal can change the window, which is a problem.
Yeah, it's a window. Uh, so I should have been on that. Well, thank you.
It would be okay if they, yeah, they should say that they should come back, cause it's a change. It was exactly the same way that all they already changed in them. Colors, some, but we don't know what they changed.
Um. Just a reminder, um, the historic ordinance, if you have comments, if you could try to submit them by the end of the weekend. Yes, I can compile everything and get that. Uh, we're having legal take a, a review of it as well, and so, uh, once we get out all the comments back, we can. So.
Yes, that's. This move, this moving forward is gonna be problematic, so, and, uh.
So, uh, and then also in your packet, you saw a spreadsheet, um, as I worked towards, uh, there is still fitting things into, uh, or they work towards the new construction guidelines, um. One of the things that I did, when I went through macros and looked at each street to see if there was a style that really stood out, and so, um, for example, Avon Place has twenty properties, eighteen of them are buildings, and according to the inventory, has these styles in somewhere, so in this case, you know, I, I said, uh, colonial revival, meaning, um, would be the prevailing ones, so if someone's doing a new build, we would say try to incorporate some of these features into your, your new build, so, um. You know, kind of incorporating this into the new construction guidelines, uh, the ones that are orange, um, did not have an inventory, so that's a little bit more work to figure out what the prevailing style will be, but. So that's me.
That's nice.
Yes. I just want to compliment you, you, um, added draft motions, which was very nice, we ignored them completely, but I wanted to thank you for that, and I will pay close your attention in future.
Okay, and this again, it's, uh, whether you use it or not, it helps me for when I do the certificates, so all right now for me, ready to go.
Yeah, with that, cause some of these, I think it's important, you would start reading one, it just makes it easier for us to know when you're, you're like a lot, we've been colored within the line, so to speak, so.
Plus, we have records, right, and say exactly what's being done, so it's good.
Nice.
You do, which I asked you.
Yeah.
It's only a possibility, it's a company that did so. Play a haircut. The, uh, review.
Yes.
Are they supposed to give anything else to us, or are they done?
And I think they're done, uh, confirmed, so.
Um, I think I have to know, and I suppose that, yeah, if you shut right now, you can hear me. So I can. Because I have. Attorney Shu Chuck, can you hear us? I'm gonna, I'll do a show around.
Yep, sorry, hello.
Okay, we have, we have a question for you.
Well, we had a question, but hang on, I'm trying to decide if I still have one, because I was kinda, I was, I was asking whether we're able to ask questions of the company of the, that did the review for us. Uh, bef, the, you know, I thought they were co, I thought they were coming back one more time, I don't know why I thought that. And, um, and I have questions for them, is, is, if outside of our, uh, you know, am I able to just call him and ask him the questions I have? Or is that great some rule that we're operating under here?
Yeah, go, go ahead. Go ahead, attorney.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, what, if you, if you ask the, the.
Yeah, I wanna read, I have some questions, I wanna reach out to the company that offered the, uh, you know, that sent us that draft.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that would be, be, be any problem, then if you could just, it, you know, in the next, and then just let, let the whole, everybody know of what, what the answer is. You know, to do like, you know, just have it, just an, an update of, of, you know, what your questions were and what the answers were.
Let me do it, I just didn't wanna to reach out, ask questions, and then find out I wasn't supposed to do that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I, I, I don't see, see any, any problem with that, um.
And not her. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, no worries, thank you.
You know, when I read, I got home, wrote through everything, we wrote, started to think, and everything we thought about, everything we heard about, left a couple of big questions, but we, we're not on the agenda today to ask it. It would be, um.
That's, uh, make us.
It's not like crickets for a second, I said, you guys, what, what you guys try to, I mean, let's say, I tried to be as quiet as I could today.
It would be the crickets.
Just that, just so you're aware, you know, that draft was, um, authored afterwards, so I can give you both versions, so you can see.
We love the version we had from the company.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that is, this will be answered the question, but there you go, that, that out, that's, yeah, I'm excited to everybody.
Glad I could help. I'm just joking, um, yeah, that, like I said, just, just as long as you update, you know, the, the whole committee, uh, on, on what your questions were and what their answers were, I don't see a problem with that.
I may not have to ask them now, because they already answered the question, and I just asked them to send a copy to everybody.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
Then that's all I have on that, that's it for me.
I got nothing.
Do I have any other registered update?
That's it.
This is, uh, foreign call, so what's next on you then, is, is that through your user development?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so, foreign call, pretty sure.
Not actually.
The seventeenth of. That's him, Walsh, yes. I'll, it, the worst on my phone. And an S school.
Maybe.
Maybe. Me too, I'm kind of a maybe, but I figure I can do it on my phone, I have to. Hell, Norty, I'll do, you know, we get short on. Walter Crowe?
Yes.
June is called.
Vacation.
That's a no.
That's.
Well, I'm on vacation, Rob, and I'm gonna come. You're always on vacation, permanent vacation.
Okay, so now, okay, if I have a moment while I'm on vacation, I will dial in.
While, while you're on the beach, Judy, you're gonna dial in on the beach, and just make us all, make us all jealous.
You all see me under my little umbrella with my wear, I'll say.
With, with your N A cocktail, right, N A?
Rob. Rob, put yourself on mute, please, sir.
So now we have last.
Did she told you to go mute yourself?
Great last, um, three thousand, is everybody running that public domain? Speak about anything in particular for a minute or two? No one? I'll go to the turn.
If, if it's up to the floor, I'm gonna post, uh, Andrew's bottle. His excellence is really, it, his assistance is really A B I, uh, A I. So the stuff that you complimenting, complimenting him on is all.
Using A I?
It's smart.
Yes.
I figured, yeah, that's, this is still.
Yeah.
This stuff. So is there any here emotions to adjourn, so who?
C.
Second.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, guys, have you guys?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, attorney, shut up. Have a good evening.
Take it easy, guys, fight.